Mr. President, I move approval of the ordinance modifying City Code Section 2.3.807 and 2.3.810.
And that passing actually, Councilmember Salatko absent. Item number 12.
Oil and Gas Committee Recommendations.
President Pro Tem, Chief of Staff. My name is Councilmember Vouse Snyder, and I’m the Chair of the Oil and Gas Committee. This afternoon, I’m going to present you the recommended areas that the Oil and Gas Committee came up with. I will give an overview and then take questions from you. But to start that off, I want City Attorney Chris Melchior to give a legal overview of the tasking of the committee. So, Chris, please give a legal overview, and then I will follow with my presentation.
President Henty, President Pro Tem Martin, Councilmembers, thank you, and Chair Snyder, thank you. I will give you a very brief presentation of the legal overview for a regulation, local regulation of oil and gas. This is very similar to what we presented to the Oil and Gas Committee in more detail. I’m sorry, the top of the slide is a little hard to read, but this is, I’ll cover this fairly quickly. There is a role for local regulation of oil and gas activity within a municipality, particularly for home rule municipalities. There is also, obviously, a role for the state. Under the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Act, the state entity, the State Division, which is called the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, is responsible for administering Colorado’s oil and gas resources and regulating oil and gas activity. Local jurisdictions retain their authority to regulate the use of land within their jurisdictional limits and to protect citizens’ health and safety and welfare, and also to address environmental concerns. When there is a conflict of law between state and locality, home rule municipality, or between federal and state, there is a legal doctrine called the preemption doctrine, which governs and provides governance, guidance for how those potential conflicts are resolved. Over the past two decades, the Colorado Supreme Court has issued a number of rulings addressing this specific issue. Where is the line between state regulation and local regulation of oil and gas activity? Local jurisdictions, the Supreme Court has ruled, cannot prohibit oil and gas development within their boundaries. So, the Colorado Supreme Court ruled definitively, and I’ll mention that case in a minute, that local municipalities cannot prohibit oil and gas. However, local municipalities can regulate use of land and can regulate certain types of activities associated with oil and gas uses or development of those resources. The determination is guided by a fundamental principle called operational conflicts. The cases I mentioned, as you can see here, these are all Colorado Supreme Court cases starting in 1992, La Plata County, the Voss v. Lundvold Brothers is the city of Greeley, Town of Frederick, Gunnison County, and again Gunnison County. In these cases, we’ll start with the La Plata County case, there is no express or implied legislative intent by the state legislature to give the COGCC exclusive jurisdiction over regulation of oil and gas activity. In other words, state law does not preempt all aspects of local authority. So, there remains a local role for regulation of oil and gas activity. The court stated that there’s a role for both local and state regulation. As I mentioned, the key is operational conflict. The operations of oil and gas activity are primarily to be regulated by the state, and that’s where the state COGCC evidences their primary role. That’s where they are engaged in issuing the permits, inspecting the wells, regulating most of the aspects of the oil and gas operations. When a local regulation is deemed to be potentially in conflict with the operations of oil and gas activity, that then triggers an evidentiary hearing, usually in district court, state district court. So, if there is a conflict, that’s something that gets resolved on a case-by-case basis in the state courts. The same day as the other case I just mentioned, Voss v. Lundvold Brothers, is a case involving the city of Greeley. The city of Greeley, at that time, attempted to ban all oil and gas activity within the town limits or the city limits. The Colorado Supreme Court struck that down. They indicated that both local and state regulation can be harmonized, but there must be some permissible use, some permissible activity of oil and gas within the city limits. Town of Frederick talked about the 1992 amendments to the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Act. The state legislature, at the request of a number of parties and interests, went back and revisited the act, made a number of changes to the act, and as part of that, some argued that that indicated an intent of the state to again occupy exclusive jurisdiction over oil and gas activity. The Colorado Supreme Court ruled again that, no, there is a role for localities, primarily around land use. They did further clarify that some measures relating to setbacks, noise abatement, visual impacts, are primarily regulated by the state, and that if localities try to regulate those, they must be careful that those do not affect operational conflict, or what that means is really act in a way that, in effect, prohibits the oil and gas activity. Now, the city or county can, this is, I think, was an important ruling for the Supreme Court, the city or county is permitted to have a local permitting process. The very fact of having a permitting process is not viewed as prohibiting oil and gas activity. Localities must be careful that their permitting process does not raise such substantial impediments to oil and gas activity that it could be viewed as, in effect, banning oil and gas activity. So, for example, extreme fees, a very lengthy or burdensome permitting process, issuing new requirements that are very difficult to meet could be viewed as operational conflict and struck down by the courts. In the Gunnison County case, the first one in 2006, the court struck down a requirement by Gunnison County to require oil and gas operators to submit their financial records and their financial statements for review by the locality. The Supreme, or the Supreme Court and the state law, the Supreme Court held that state law found that that was too intrusive and too high a burden on oil and gas activity. County regulations could not require access to the operator’s financial records. However, all the other issues, water quality, soil erosion, wildlife, vegetation, livestock, wildlife protection, et cetera, were remanded for an evidentiary hearing. And what that meant was that the Colorado Supreme Court was saying that whether or not a local regulation or a local oversight of that activity on those grounds was an operational conflict would be determined on a fact-by-fact basis. So, there could be reasonable regulation of water quality standards, there could be reasonable regulation of soil erosion, there might be reasonable regulation of vegetation and wildlife protection, but the court left that for a fact-by-fact determination, depending on what that regulation, or what that regulatory effort by the localities was. There is currently ongoing litigation, again, in Gunnison regarding Gunnison County’s effort as a local governmental entity to monitor compliance of an oil and gas operator with regard to state regulations. There has been reported, and it’s been a frequent discussion topic around the state, that the COGCC does not have sufficient resources, does not have sufficient personnel to adequately monitor oil and gas activity and wells. Some of the localities, Gunnison County for one, have attempted to see if they could monitor or enforce the state regulations by incorporating the state regulations into the local code. And what the court determined there was that they would, on the facts presented, find that an invalid effort by the locality to enforce the state laws or the state regulations. They also, again, talked about, there’s a fact-by-fact basis determination on whether or not certain water quality or other notice provisions would be permissible under the separation of powers between state and localities. Now, when the court invalidated, let me go back for a minute, when they invalidated the Gunnison County efforts in 2012 to monitor compliance of an oil and gas operator with state regulations, they left the door open for state and local jurisdictions to agree with each other that localities could inspect and report violations of the state code or the state law. And Gunnison County, as I’ll mention in a minute, is well underway with that effort, in a cooperative effort with the COGCC. One question came up is whether or not our status, City of Colorado Springs, as a home rule municipality, gave us special powers or special rights in this arena versus a statutory city, or versus a special district, or another type of local government entity. And the short answer is that there is no significant difference. It really comes down to whether or not the local regulations are focused on land use, which is primarily a local concern, and do not destroy, or impede, or conflict with state law. So, again, the core issue is operational conflict. Now, many local governments in Colorado do have existing regulations governing oil and gas development. The committee, with Chair Snyder and the other members, Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Dugan and the other members of the committee, spent quite a bit of time going through other regulations of counties and cities around the state. We spent a great deal of time on that. We also brought in outside counsel who are expert in this field to assist the committee and assist us in this review. I won’t go through all the details of that, but I will let you know that the committee has looked at a fairly exhaustive review of other state, or I’m sorry, other localities regulations of oil and gas, and there are a number that have been found to be permissible, that if the city or city council is so inclined, could be adopted. One of the, one of the issues that came up is the level of regulation. And Arapahoe County considered some very comprehensive regulations, ended up not pursuing that. I think the concern that I saw expressed was that that was in conflict with the state regulation, it was too comprehensive, and it went into areas that really were state areas, not local areas. El Paso County, as we know, recently adopted regulations. We’ve reviewed those, Chapter 5 in their code. They have certain sections that we may consider following. There are other areas that we may, that council may want to go further or less far. El Paso County did focus on water quality. We’ll talk about that in a minute, but they were challenged on that by the State Attorney General’s Office, and I believe they are currently still in negotiations with the State Attorney General’s Office on the appropriate level of water quality oversight by the county. Right now, the county’s regulations are focused on transportation, noxious weed, emergency response, and water quality. You may decide to consider additional areas. Alternative avenues, in addition to regulation, or in addition to amendments to the zoning code, in addition to amendments to the land use code, which for us, for the city, is captured in Chapter 7, we can also consider MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding. We can consider intergovernmental agreements. We can take a look at a robust and active LGD process, which is the local government designee or representative, and we do have a person designated, Dick Anderwall is our LGD currently. Gunnison County, as I mentioned, is working on an MOU with the COGCC. It looks like that will be successful, where Gunnison County is considering having a code officer focused on inspecting the activity in Gunnison County based on compliance with state regulations. If they find, as I understand their agreement, the one they’re working towards now, if they find a violation, they refer that to the state. They do not take enforcement action. That code officer would be a county employee paid for out of the general fund and would be trained by the state. And I think that’s part of, one of the important details of that MOU, is the state wanted to have a training process so that if there is a local employee or person helping the state to review that, that that person is properly trained. These are some of the areas where local government is not permitted to regulate. I won’t go through all of these, but there are a number of them that individuals and persons in the community are concerned about understandably, but these are areas that are either exclusively or primarily regulated by the state. Some of them include setback, noise, water quality. We mentioned there’s some conversation on trying to find a larger role for localities in that. Hydraulic fracturing, the process of whether or not fracking is permitted or not is primarily a state regulatory issue. It’s an operational process. Storage pits, waste disposal, chemical disclosure rules, those are, again, primarily state jurisdictional issues. Currently, this is a review of what Colorado Springs has in its code. As I mentioned, I think several months ago when this process began, City of Colorado Springs does not have oil and gas-specific code provisions. The city code currently anticipates or contemplates that oil and gas is a type of mining. Mining is currently regulated in the Land Use Code, Chapter 7. It talks about, as you see in the quote, towards the bottom of this slide, it’s used in, mining is used here in the broad sense to include extraction of naturally occurring minerals, including whether in solid, liquid, or gas form. So, that would include oil and natural gas. The code was not written with oil and gas activity in mind, and that’s obviously why we’re here. City of Colorado Springs’ current regulatory process, which goes through the Planning Department and the Planning Commission, has approval standards governing zoning, property values, quality of life, impact on neighbors. It has additional criteria regarding roads, reclamation, noise. Those are things that would probably be useful to retain within whatever code amendments we adopt for oil and gas, and we probably need to consider ones beyond that, obviously. Before I ask for questions, I just will mention that we have, in our office, Mark Smith and others that are already working on draft regulations. We have, as I mentioned, our offices worked with the Oil and Gas Committee. They come back to council for council’s recommendation. Once council, once you have guidance for us or a recommendation for us, we’re anticipating that if you do ask that these matters go forward and you do ask us to draft regulations, we’ve already begun that process. Two ways that that might be done. One is to amend Chapter 7 and include all of the oil and gas regulatory oversight in Chapter 7. One of the key issues there will be zoning. What areas would we anticipate oil and gas activity to be either a permitted use, or a conditional use, or a special use in certain zoning areas? Currently, we only permit oil and gas in agriculture. That is somewhat unique in the state and something that we’d have to look at very closely. It’s unclear if that is legally permissible. So, maybe one of the issues that we must consider as a city is to open up other zoned areas potentially to oil and gas activity, whether it’s under a special use, or a conditional use, or certain restrictions. So, that’s something that council will want to look at. We’ve also looked at water quality. We’ve looked at other regulations that we might consider. The second option would be to both amend Chapter 7, the land use and the zoning code, and create a new chapter, Chapter 15, for oil and gas activity. One suggestion or one advisory for you is that if we took that route, that could or could not go through the Planning Commission, would be up to council, could come directly back to council. Gunnison County did take that route. They have a separate chapter on oil and gas, but they drafted it really to be a land use, additional land use section. So, whether we call it Chapter 7, or Chapter 15, or another number, it really, the oil and gas regulation must be tied to land use. That is the core principle for local regulation. I’ll have, be happy to answer questions or offer other comments. Right now, I think we’ve talked with the committee and with the chair about being prepared to take all of these matters to Planning Commission, and we have some suggestions, perhaps after the presentation, on how that might be done and the timing of that.
Does it make a legal difference whether the oil and gas company owns the property or just acquired the mineral rights?
It does not. What the courts, and this is both federal and state, look at is what they call surface rights and subsurface rights. And subsurface rights are given virtually equal status in terms of property law to surface rights. There’s different ways to regulate it. There has not yet been a case decided, to my knowledge, in the federal courts or the state courts, where a city has, or any sort of governmental entity, has endeavored to deny access to subsurface rights, mineral rights in its entirety, and been upheld. So, it’s, because we allow property owners to divide their estate, is what it’s called, the surface estate or the subsurface estate, because we allow property owners to do that and to transfer those, the person who’s purchased the subsurface rights has no way of accessing that value or that asset unless they’re allowed to access it through the surface. And so, the courts have found that, in general, that that must be allowed in some manner.
But if, we have a kind of a unique situation here with Banning Lewis Ranch, whereas whether the oil exploration company actually bought the land, it’s not somebody else’s property that they’re going on to with permission and whatever. That doesn’t give them any extra legal right because they own the surface. Like, they still have to apply by whatever the state regulations are, and it still will allow us, as a regulatory body, to impose some kind of regulation on that property, even though they’re the property owner.
That is correct. And that’s one thing we made clear previously to council and to the committee, and the committee understands that, and obviously will talk to you about that. We are not talking about regulation of Banning Lewis Ranch. Obviously, this matter has come to the city primarily because of the recent purchase of Banning Lewis Ranch by the Ultra Petroleum Corporation. That is not what we’re regulating. We’re not regulating Banning Lewis Ranch. We are adopting, or we are asking council to consider adopting appropriate regulation of oil and gas activity within the entire city limits. And the courts have ruled that you cannot forbid oil and gas activity within your entire municipality, but you can, it’s, the question hasn’t been litigated, but there are, there’s certainly law that speaks to the ability of a city to prohibit access to certain subsurface rights on a particular parcel. So, for example, if you purchased a piece of property wanting to access the subsurface rights, but when you purchased it, you knew that you couldn’t access those subsurface rights for legitimate municipal regulatory reasons, the courts will likely uphold that. But you cannot prohibit that activity entirely.
Nor could they come down and say, I want to drill in Acacia Park for us, as we could...
For example, yes.
Any other questions for Chris? Go ahead.
It’s probably a lame question, but somebody’s got a three-acre lot in the middle of Colorado Springs, and it’s only, we can’t drill, they could not drill on that because of the zoning then. Is that kind of the essence of what you’re saying?
Yes. What I, the way I’d answer that is that there are a large number of municipalities and counties in the state of Colorado. They currently allow oil and gas activity in certain areas that are zoned for certain uses. So, they might have, for example, oil and gas is a permissible activity in agricultural, commercial, industrial, but not residential. If someone were to purchase, or if someone owned residential property and they wanted to drill an oil well in their backyard on residential property, currently, there are a number of municipalities that they would forbid that. Doesn’t matter that that’s the only property you own within the city limits. Doesn’t matter that the only way you can get your oil underneath your residential property is to drill. The city can forbid that for that parcel. That has not been challenged or overturned in court, to my knowledge. What the city must do, though, is allow that kind of activity somewhere else within the city limits. So, some other property owner must be permitted to access the subsurface rights, the mineral rights. So, if the city has regulated a certain parcel that does not allow oil and gas activity, and that owner happens to own that parcel, and they happen to want to access their subsurface rights, they may be forbidden entirely from accessing those subsurface rights.
So, if we went back to the Banning Lewis Ranch, and that was pre-platted, and so there’s residential lots out there, and they want to drill on one of those residential lots, let’s say, for example, unless we change the zoning, then somebody inside the city could do the same. Is that, did I hear that correctly? So, some, the person in the middle of the city with a three-acre lot would then also be allowed to drill. Is that a correct assumption?
I would answer it two ways. One is that currently, whether it’s Ultra or some other property, or they could apply to the city to have their property downzoned agricultural, and if that process were completed and their property were rezoned agricultural, under our current city code, they could drill for oil and gas on that property if it were zoned agricultural. Second scenario is if the city council went forward and opened up other zoning areas to oil and gas activity, say, industrial. Again, property owner Banning Lewis, or anyone else could come in and seek to have their property rezoned industrial, or if part of their property happens to be zoned industrial today, they would then be permitted to engage in oil and gas activity under that new code in the future on industrial property. But that portion of their property that was not zoned either industrial or agricultural under that hypothetical would still not be able to be drilled on. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can I answer your question?
Well, I don’t know, but I guess my, it’s maybe a kind of weird question, but, you know, there’s lots of places where we have three- or five-acre sites within the city, and let’s say that they figure out that, like in Fargo, North Dakota, they have oil and gas that they didn’t know about, and everybody’s crazy about drilling for oil and gas up there now. I have a three-acre lot. Man, if I could, you know, make a few million bucks, I might be inclined to, you know, drill a well. I mean, under our current rules, what I think I hear you say is that’s not allowed, and so what we will have to do is, in the Banning Lewis Ranch, for example, is to go, and if they want to drill, we would make the rules and say that they would have to downzone what has been previously zoned residential to some other zoning. Just trying to get clarity on the process.
That is correct. I think currently, right now, again, we’re talking about regulatory change for the entire city, for all parcels within the city limits. And if we, if council, through whatever process you deem the most expeditious, if you change the zoning classifications that permit oil and gas activity, every property owner in the city would be similarly situated and would be treated the same. So, if your property, your three acres, happens to be zoned industrial, and the code changes to allow oil and gas activity industrial, you could then drill. If your property is zoned commercial, and the zoning code has not changed to allow commercial, you still could not drill. And today, if your property is zoned commercial, you cannot drill today.
Okay, so I guess my question’s a little deeper than that, because, go back to Banning Lewis.
Right.
But they’ve got all this stuff that’s zoned residential, right?
Right.
So, they’ll have to come back to us to get it downzoned?
Yeah, and it’ll be actually with, to talk about Banning Lewis for just a moment.
Correct.
They will have to do that. It’ll be even more complicated, because, as you know, we’ve talked about before, Banning Lewis Ranch, that entire parcel, is what we call hard-zoned, and it’s subject to an annexation agreement with, I believe, 27 or 28 other annexors. And it’s a, an agreement that includes the city, I believe, as a party, as well as all these other parties. And so, to change that agreement, to change that zoning, will require fairly extensive conversations and negotiations even after a zoning change. A zoning change in terms of, not zoning change of the parcel, but even after the code, the zoning code for the city has changed, that will, that parcel will have to go through a whole level, another level of process.
So, I guess my final comment would be, in layman’s language, then, the fear that we’re going to get Ultra Resources or anybody else to come in and plot oil derricks everywhere is an unfounded fear. And that’s my point. Is that a correct statement?
I think that’s a correct statement, yes.
Okay, I’m just trying to say that globally, so people get that, that there’s not going to be this massive drilling because of the zoning laws and the rules we already have in place.
I agree. I mean, I just, I want to, you know, lawyers always like to qualify everything, so I’ll qualify. The city of Greeley took a different approach. The city of Greeley has, by and large, permitted oil and gas activity in every zoned category. And the committee did a site visit, you’ll hear about that. So, if this city were to take that approach, then if every zoning classification was open to oil and gas as a permissible activity, then Banning Lewis and every other parcel in the city would have that option. But, okay.
Could I follow up to Tim’s question?
Sure.
If we were to say, okay, industrial, you can drill. What happens if the industrial abuts a residential property? You talked a little bit about setbacks, that we could not regulate setbacks. If the state regulate, falls under state or something. So, are there established setbacks within the state regulations that would prohibit them from drilling within, even though it’s zoned for drilling, but not within a certain distance of residential area?
Yes, there are, if you think of it as an overlay, there’s, the first level, pick whether you want state or local, but the first level might be local. Are you in the correct zoned area? Have you gotten a local permit? The second category will be the state permit. Now, the way Colorado has worked that process is generally the opposite, usually, and this is what you’ve seen with Ultra and with others. They’ll go to the state first. They’ll seek state approval and seek a state permit, and the state will address largely what you’ve just talked about, setback, water, waste disposal, casing of certain parts of the operation, use of wastewater. All those sort of things will be regulated by the state. Once they have a state permit, whoever it might be, then they must come to the locality and get the local permission. So, there’ll be two different layers. And in this case, Ultra, as you know, has been reported, they do have two state permits for two locations. Those locations will then have to go through the local process. So, the reverse is true as well. If you’re right, if there’s something zoned industrial here, and they could meet the local regulations, but they couldn’t meet the state setback, or couldn’t meet the state regulations, they would not be permitted to drill.
Thank you.
Brandy?
I just want to try and help answer Tim’s question. Currently, as it sits right now, the only place that you can drill is agricultural. So, as Chris said, it is hard-zoned out of the Banning Lewis. The only way that they can drill is if they downzone it. The only way you can drill on your residential lot is if you downzone it. Also, it generally takes about 10 acres to drill... takes about 10 acres to drill. So, while you do have three acres, and I'm hoping you own the mineral rights, because if not, you couldn't drill anyway, it generally takes about 10 acres. So, I don't think it's codified specifically, but hopefully, when the planning department brings back their recommendations, a 10-acre minimum would be much appreciated so that people aren't thinking that with my half-acre lot, as long as I have a drilling rig, I can set it up and start drilling. So, it generally takes about 10 acres, and as it sits right now, it does have to be agricultural. And I think what we're doing is asking Dick Androwell and the planning department and the attorney's office to look and see, do we want to maintain that downzoning? Do we have to have it that way? Or do we want an overlay? And their job is to come back with us, to us, with options to see what council feels is the best approach.
And one example, and I think that's a very good point, Councilmember Williams, one example is that if we, if the city tried to adopt a regulation that said, "You may not drill unless you have a parcel of 10 or more acres," we'd have to review that to see if that would be considered an operational conflict under state law. And so, we'd have to review to see if that was permissible, if you were so desiring to make that sort of requirement. So, those are the things that we will have to work through as we draft the regulations, as we go through the review process, whether it's through the planning commission or some other method.
Okay. Val, back to you.
Thanks a lot, Chris. Before I start, could I ask, please ask Officer Dave to bring in the documents that I showed you earlier and place them on my left? On the floor?
You said I'll play Workman's Comp.
Yeah. Well, the reason I had them do it, I wasn't sure council's covered for Workman's Comp, so that's perfect. That's perfect. I will cover those materials in a few minutes.
Quickly, I hope.
I'm going to, I got the mic, Mr. President.
Thank you.
This is a quick update on what the Oil and Gas Committee has done. I want to emphasize that we are not, that we did not draft regulations. We recommend in some areas to direct the city staff to come back with options and draft regulations. So, I'm going to cover a few actions of the committee and also the recommended areas that we're suggesting that the city may want to give direction to. I want to thank first, the incredible support that I had from the city attorney's office. Not only did they engage a consultant who's an expert in oil and gas, but also they engaged a staff assistant that probably kept my sanity. But thanks a lot, Chris, for the help that you and your office did. These are the members of the Oil and Gas Committee. For about 14 weeks, we met three hours each week. And you'll see the recommendations that we came up with. The objective of the Oil and Gas Committee was to provide legislative advice to city council on future oil and gas regulatory and oversight policy options. Basically, we were to get educated and see what was, what are the legally enforceable areas that we could recommend to draft some regulations on.
Just left click.
Two of Colorado Springs finest just buttoned a couple of boxes. These are the documents that we used in concert with our consultant to drill down what are the recommended areas that we may want to pursue as a city. It was a very intensive process, and I'm glad I didn't carry those boxes, because I probably would have tripped. One aspect of getting educated, the committee took a field trip to Greeley, Colorado. Greeley has been doing oil and gas operations for about 20 years. It was an incredible experience to talk with the community development folks. They gave us a tour of the town. We got to talk to the mayor. We got to talk to a county commissioner and see hands-on how they did oil and gas. And we got some do's and don'ts from them. Want to reemphasize what Chris said. We, as a city, cannot ban drilling within the city limits. Some people want us to do that. We are not allowed to do that. However, we can impose some reasonable land use regulations, which is what I will cover here in a few As Chris also mentioned, this is not some regulations for banning Lewis Ranch. These will be regulations for the entire city of Colorado Springs. Part of the process of working with the state, we have a government position called the Local Government Designee. We have Planning Manager Dick Androwell, who occupies that position. Dick is going to explain some of his duties, and then he'll turn it back over to me.
Thanks, Councilmember Snyder. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of council, Dick Androwell. The LGD, the Local Government Designee, is authorized under state oil and gas rules and serves as a single point of contact when the state refers new applications for oil and gas activity within the local jurisdiction to the jurisdiction for review. I think initially, that program was really set up as a convenience of the state. So, they only needed to talk to one person at the local level to get the full flavor of how the local community felt about an oil and gas permit. But in, operationally, it's turned out to be quite more than that. And what we do when we receive the notice of application from the state is we distribute those notifications to affected departments and coordinate a single response on part of the city. I've been serving as the city LGD since the two Ultra state permit applications were filed in December. And I want to take a moment to share with you how that process worked. Chris Melcher, Steve Cox, and I went to Denver to introduce ourselves to the state COGCC director and his senior staff. And we asked initially that the state postpone decisions on the two state permit applications until the city had had an opportunity to review and develop oil and gas regulations. And if the state were unable to accommodate that request, that at a minimum, they consider specific city requests for conditions of approval, or COAs, that could be attached to the permits that would address city concerns. We left that meeting feeling comfortable that the state would sincerely consider recommendations brought forward by the city. So, I assembled the local review team, city roadway and stormwater people, police, fire, planning, legal, airport staff, and Colorado Springs utilities, and we looked at those two applications. We identified specific concerns over stormwater, water quality monitoring, proximity of one of the wells to the SDS water transmission line, and concerns over possible damage to that facility, emergency management, transportation impacts, and impacts to airport operations in terms of the clear zone, airport clear zone. And we requested that the state include specific COAs to address these concerns. I believe there were 11 in the letter of transmittal that we sent back to the state in February. The state issued a draft decision, sent it back to us for our review. We word smithed it a bit and requested some clarifications, which were incorporated into the final decision. While COGCC did not accommodate our request to postpone decisions on the state permits, each of the city's substantive concerns were addressed in the decision issued by the state through the conditions of approval. And if they had not been, an option remained for the city, and that would have been to request a hearing before the formal Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. So, in looking back, I would say that the, working with the state through the LGD process worked well for our initial experience with them, particularly in the absence of local regulations. Without that specific guidance, we needed to call upon our team of in-house experts to help identify and address those issues, which I think they did remarkably well with. Addressing the last comment on the slide, and looking ahead a bit, the Local Government Designee has an opportunity to serve as a clearinghouse for local complaints if oil and gas becomes a reality in our community, and be proactive and responsive to operational issues. Case in point was in El Paso County. The Local Government Designee, my counterpart at the county, was made aware of some dust conditions on one of the drilling operations in the county, and was able to bring county resources together. And in conjunction with the full cooperation of the well driller, were able to, excuse me, resolve the dust situation within 48 hours of the complaint. So, the proactive response, I think, was very useful in that circumstance. I think the Local Government Designee could maintain an email notification list for citizens who want to be apprised of new state applications. It's their responsibility to communicate directly with the state. That's done through electronic communications through the state website. But we cannot substitute city comments for their comments, so they would need to continue to do that. But we certainly could provide a notification system to keep busy people aware of what's going on. Another potential role would be to keep elected officials and the public apprised of oil and gas activity through periodic reports, perhaps an annual report back to the mayor and council as to what is happening relative to oil and gas in the community. And lastly, there's a need to continue coordination with the county on issues of mutual concern, and water quality has been cited earlier today as one of those. So, that's an overview of the Local Government Designee, and I'll turn the presentation back to Councilmember Snyder.
Thanks, Dick.
Now, I will, I and some members of the Oil and Gas Committee will summarize the recommended areas for potential regulation. These are the six areas that the committee I'll review operational conflict again. To summarize what Chris said earlier, operational conflict in layman's terms, we as a city, we as a local government, cannot craft regulations that will conflict with state or federal regulations. It was a recommendation of the committee to ensure that operational conflict language is included in whatever aspects of the city code that we come up with. Now, I'd like to introduce Oil and Gas Committee John Maynard. John is going to cover zoning. He's going to cover site plan requirements and also setbacks. John Maynard.
Thanks, Val. I'm John Maynard, and I'm a committee member. I've been asked to assist in this presentation primarily along my area of expertise, which is land use and land use regulation. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about zoning. As has been stated previously, zoning is the traditional method of land use regulation by local government. And what we have done is list several alternative forms of land use regulation, which are on this slide. And I'll go through them. I'd point out, first of all, that they go from really the most regulatory, if you will, at the top, to the least at the bottom. And the current situation, as has been stated, is that oil and gas development is permitted as a conditional use in the agricultural or A-zone. That's our current standard, and that's probably the most complex in terms of our local regulation alternatives. Another alternative would be to allow oil and gas only through a use variance process. The use variance has, you see these occasionally come before city council. They have fairly stringent criteria for decision-making and approval. And should you choose to use this methodology, the recommendation would be that you amend the criteria specifically for oil and gas so that essentially, you could preclude any oil and gas development by saying it's only appropriate as a use variance, and then apply the current criteria, which frankly, probably cannot be met. The next option would be to permit oil and gas development in all zones except residential zones. So, if someone wished to pursue their development rights, mineral rights, within a residential zone, they'd either have to go through a use variance process or a rezoning process. There's some practical matters, as have been discussed previously, in that, as Councilwoman Williams indicated, it takes approximately 10 acres to actually drill and operate an oil and gas development. So, you'd have to have an appropriate acreage from a practical standpoint, whether it's in the zoning regulations or not, in order to explore for and develop oil and gas. I mention that area situation because when you combine that with setbacks, which I'll talk about in a minute, it essentially creates the need for a parcel that, well, it means that you're not going to be able to drill on your half-acre lot, just from a practical standpoint. The state regulations of 350-foot setback in all directions mean that you're basically going to have an acre and a half lot or so at a minimum anyhow. Another option, which is a little bit more permissive, which would be to allow oil and gas development in all zones within the city as a conditional use. And in speaking with Dick Androwell just before the hearing on this item today, Dick feels, and I haven't looked at this specifically, but he indicated to me that it is likely that the city would need to modify the existing conditional use standards slightly to specifically address oil and gas. He thought that some of the tests could not be met, and therefore, we may be excluding the use if this were the method that you choose to follow. And then the last is a sort of an open-ended zoning application. The city of Aurora is currently in the process, and Dick can probably speak to the details of this, but permitting the use of oil and gas development in all zones, but where it is within 1,000 feet of certain other land uses, schools, parks, water reservoir, other uses, then it would require a conditional use. I should mention that a conditional use in our current code requires a public hearing before the planning commission. It would not necessarily come to council unless it was appealed to council. So, there is a hearing process. There's a public notice process. Citizens can participate in that process. There's adequate notice. And, you know, that's essentially the city of Greeley methodology, would be to permit oil and gas development as a conditional use in all zones. The Aurora process would essentially have an administrative function if you were outside of this 1,000-feet setback between certain uses and then have a public hearing process if you were within that setback distance. Any questions on that before I move forward?
Brandy?
John, as the committee has set out some alternatives, is the committee going to recommend a preferred alternative? Do you have a recommendation on?
Well, we didn't really get to that point in our deliberations. I think we're in the permit the use in all zones except residential or conditional use in all zones. Now, this Aurora example came up after the committee deliberations, so Dick and Val and I added that to the list after we were aware of that, just to give you an additional alternative. But that's the general direction, I believe, that the majority of the committee members would recommend.
Thank you.
Any others?
Go ahead, Jimmy.
I'll go on to site planning. I'll introduce this by maybe referring to Committee Member Michael Martin's comment as we deliberated site planning and what it means to go through a site planning process. And he said, "Let's not talk about oil and gas. Let's talk about ice cream factory." If an ice cream factory were going to locate in Colorado Springs, what would the process be? Would they have to go through a site planning process? And their answer is yes. We have a very thorough-
John, can you switch the slide?
Oh, sorry. There we go. Thanks. We have a very thorough site planning process currently in the city regulations. All non-residential land uses go through that process, and most residential land uses do as well in some form or another. And we would recommend that we continue the site development review process that's currently in place for oil and gas development. And again, it has a public, whether- And again, it has a public, whether you choose to have oil and gas go through a public hearing process or an administrative process, there's still a notification with the site development review process, and it ends up with an approved development plan. The question is, does that constitute a permit? And I think our suggestion to you would be that there should be a permit as a result of an approved development plan, where there normally, you get an approved development plan now, and you go to region building and get a building permit to build something, but if you're not going to region building to build a structure, then you still need a permit process. And the permit allows the city to attach conditions and essentially make a final determination, and the type of conditions would relate to some of the issues that Dick has mentioned with the conditions of approval through the local government designee process. Last area I'd like to talk about is setbacks. The state has rules-
John, did I?
Got it? Okay. Move so fast, I'm sorry.
Appreciate that, though. On that pre-application meeting required for all oil and gas applications, it says it's preferably in advance of, number one, through the state. Can we require that in advance of information?
I'm not sure, and I think that's a legal question that the legal staff will look into. Currently, a pre-application meeting is required. The planning staff has developed a site plan, development plan checklist. It's an all-inclusive list that applies to residential and non-residential, so my vision would be that you sit down with the applicant, you go down the checklist, this is required, this is not required, because it pertains to land uses that are essentially not appropriately regulated for this. For instance, what's the residential land use density proposed? Well, that's not applicable on the site plan. But the state also requires a site plan, and if this process with the city, the pre-application process, was started in advance of the state process, then the applicant could essentially efficiently create a site development plan that satisfied both the state and the city regulations at the same time, and it's essentially a one-document, suits all.
Go ahead.
Anything else? Setbacks. State curling has rules 150, or 350 feet, excuse me, in high-density areas, which would need to be defined in our local code, 150 feet in low-density areas. What the committee discussed was adding some flexibility to this, and Greeley, and frankly, the Home Builders Association has recommended flexibility. Flexibility can go both directions. In Greeley, where they anticipate urban development to be very close to oil and gas development, either in the short term or the long term, and they want to make efficient use of their urban land, they have situations where they've reduced the setbacks from the 350 feet in an urban area and reduced those to 150 feet, so that urban development could, at some point in time, become fairly close to a producing wellsite. We would recommend that some form of flexibility be added into the code regarding setbacks to allow that type of discussion to take place. Currently, it takes place in the LDG process, and I don't know if it specifically has taken place in the two that Dick has reviewed, I doubt it, but it could take place in the future, so that would be essentially a good way to add flexibility to our code. That's the end of my presentation, unless you have additional questions of me, either as from what I've given you or as a committee member.
I would have one more question. So, when you talk about, like, setbacks and just zoning, I mean, there's-
There's two things in my mind. One is controlling the noise, just on what it comes once it's all set up. Two different scenarios.
Exactly.
So, do we need to talk about two different sets of policies?
I think that goes to the flexibility. The state regulations are generally for exploration, because that's when you have the, and it's basically one and a half times the height of the drill rig. And so, once you have, once the drill rig is removed and you have the development facilities, they're nowhere near as tall, and you don't need that, you don't need a setback for that reason. You may want it for other reasons, but you don't need it from that safety reason.
Chris?
I just wanted to add a quick comment, that setbacks are established for a variety of reasons. They're to address noise, vibration, noxious gases or fumes, as well as visible, I guess what you'd call aesthetic concerns, so that someone doesn't look out their kitchen window and see a rig. But there's a number of different reasons, so the setback might even, you might consider those factors, even after the drilling rig, which is 40 to 50 feet high, even after that's gone. The other operations are obviously less substantial, the ones we saw in Greeley, the mature sort of oil well has equipment and things that are about six to eight feet high, I think, was sort of on average. So, those are things that can be taken into account when you talk about setbacks.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Thanks, John.
I think Brent Shulum is the next speaker on groundwater.
Good afternoon, I'm Brent Shulum, System Extensions Manager with Colorado Springs Utilities, and I'll be covering the subject of groundwater and surface water quality for the committee. As a bit of background, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission has very extensive and comprehensive sets of rules, but they have not adopted any statewide water sampling regulations or water quality regulations at this time. The consensus of the Oil and Gas Committee was that this is one of the most important issues that should be addressed and to ensure the highest quality standards for Colorado Springs. And this is for the protection of groundwater and, of course, surface water resources throughout the city. One method to monitor these resources is through the use of a baseline water quality and sampling program. The Colorado Oil and Gas Association, also known as COGA, has established a voluntary water testing program with a number of operators across the street. However, it's voluntary, and not all gas and oil operators participate in the program. COGA has formalized a program where the participants conduct water sampling in a minimum of two locations within a half-mile of the well pad, and then conduct pre-drilling and post-completion testing and sampling. The groundwater features that are sampled are existing water wells or surface seeps or springs. After the samples are collected, the testing is performed by a qualified lab to monitor a number of constituents and potential contaminants. The results are then submitted to the COGCC. Committee recommends incorporating this program into the local regulations such that baseline testing and monitoring is mandatory and required for all operators working within the city. El Paso County was pursuing their own similar regulation, but was advised by the state attorney general that implementing such regulations may be subject to preemption. So, that would operationally conflict with state interests, and so accordingly, they're in the process of revising their regulation, and they're formalizing an IGA with the COGCC to implement a program and really navigate this preemption issue. They hope to have that completed this summer. So, the committee's recommendation is to ensure, is to require the baseline water testing and adopt a program similar to El Paso County, where the water testing and sampling will be required within the city, and you implement that through local code or standard conditions of approval through an agreement with COGCC. And the committee felt these are reasonable water quality protections that are supported by the industry and protect the water resources from impacts of oil and gas operations. Through the public meetings and input process, the input the committee received from the committee strongly supported such a program to include testing and sampling. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brent? Thanks, Brent.
All right, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Snyder.
Lastly, the committee spent some time trying to figure out how the city should be compensated for any impacts that may come from oil and gas operations. We decided that we haven't got the staff to find that out, so that's why the recommended area for the city to figure it out. We do, the committee did come up with the recommendation that we need to have a traffic report for anybody that wants to drill to see what the impact would be on the roadways. We need to require bonding or some sort of financial assurance for somebody who wants to pull a permit, and that we need to establish some process to assess application fees, but those are only to cover the cost to process the permit. Again, that permit, we, the city still needs to come up with exactly what the process would be for that permit. So, bottom line, we need to be compensated as a city for any impacts that may come from the oil and gas operations, but they need to be cost-neutral and just recover the cost of these operations. The next steps, that's why we're here, city council to direct the city attorney and the city staff to draft regulations and options for the city planning commission, and then to review those, and to have a planning commission public hearing. We suggest that planning commission has a special public hearing on the draft regulations and options, probably in September, and then forward those recommendations for code changes, if any, to the council for final consideration and adoption. And hopefully, we could have something for the council to consider in terms of what kind of regulations that we may want by October. I'll open up to any questions to council for myself or some of the committee members, and then if we have any questions from the public, I'll take my position at the dais and will take those.
Bernie?
So, I'm not real clear on why we're here today, other than to direct staff to develop some draft regulations that we would then, through the planning commission, bring to the public for their consideration. So, if we decide to take public input today, would that be on what the public would like to see in the regulations, or are we just going to hear complaints about why we shouldn't frac or why we shouldn't allow oil and gas? What would be the purpose of the public hearing at this point? Mr. Attorney.
To your first question, my recommendation, we have these areas of potential regulation. We have some recommended actions for each. We direct the city attorney, we direct the city staff to bring back options to, or take options to the city planning commission, have a public hearing, and then bring those recommendations back to council for the normal review process.
Right.
As to your second question for the public hearing, the public can comment as they wish. We have the recommended areas that the committee did study on, are the areas that we think are legally enforceable. And we'd like to offer the opportunity for the city attorney.
Just wanted to add a couple of quick comments to your question, Councilmember Herbin. I think, and part of why Chair Snyder and the committee are here, is that only council acting as a body can give guidance or direction to the city attorney or city staff, so the committee itself could not direct what staff or the city should do. Council has options today. Council could say that today, we decide there's no need for any further regulation. Thank you for your efforts. You can now go back to your regular duties, and we ask that nothing be done. But if council would like something to be done, then council could give that direction. I think the recommendation is that council direct, as Chair Snyder said, as Councilmember Snyder said, direct city staff and city attorney to bring forward draft regulations to city planning commission. That would be one option for you to say that all of this should go through city planning commission. You could say that city planning commission, we ask you to do that in September. Maybe you say, "We want it sooner than that." So, city council can tell the planning commission to do that in August and come back here in September. Those are some of the decisions you might make. I think you can also give us direction in terms of you do or do not like the idea of all of it going through city planning commission. You may say, "Parts of it go to planning commission, like zoning, and parts of it, you may say you want us to come back directly to you rather than planning commission." Those are some options, I think, for you, and we're prepared to do whatever it is that council would like us to do with regard to those options.
But, Chris, if I remember back from your presentation, and I don't have a copy, but
I apologize, we'll get you copies of those.
So, I'm doing this off memory, so help me out, but you said there's certain things that the local government cannot do because it's regulated by the state, and if I remember, on that list was fracking or fracturing, I think was the words you used.
Correct. The city cannot regulate whether or not an oil and gas operator can use fracking or hydraulic fracturing as an operation to extract oil and gas. That is a state jurisdictional issue. The state will regulate fracking as an operational activity. The city can regulate where oil and gas extraction can occur. The city can regulate in what, several aspects of how that occurs. The city can regulate what types of fees to charge. The city can regulate what types of permit to require. But in terms of can the city ban fracturing, hydraulic fracturing, currently, the law seems clear that the city, a locality, whether it's a county or city, cannot issue a regulation that says we'll allow oil and gas activity, but we will not allow fracturing. We will only allow traditional, straight-down drilling. That seems to be beyond the purview of localities, that's a state regulatory choice.
So, for example, if the entire community was against fracking, if all nine of us were against fracking, the state would just look at us and say, "Tough."
You could change the code to reflect that, and I'd be prepared to defend you in court. I would advise you to be prepared to go to court on that. I would also advise that you would probably not prevail.
That's right. Thank you for finishing the sentence, so. Angela?
I just wanted to point to procedure, so we are going to have public comment, and then we'll go back to the dais for a final comment.
Absolutely.
Okay, just to make sure, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Randy?
Like Scott, I'm going to apologize in advance, because I have a feeling by the time the public comments over, it'll be time for me to depart. But I would like to ask Councilmember Snyder to add something to his motion, because as the city attorney has stated, in order to give the city attorney direction, we need a vote of five, and I would much appreciate the city attorney's office looking into that 10-acre minimum to see if we can codify that. I think that would be very helpful to alleviate a lot of the concerns of people worrying about their neighbor on their half-acre drilling. So, if that is possible to get that undertaken, I'd love to add that to the motion.
My microphone doesn't work half the time. I took a trip to Silt, I thought they were drilling on five-acre parcels now, so I'm concerned about identifying down to 10 acres. I'd like to know what the real number is.
We will look into that issue and give you legal advice back. What I would predict is that the state regulation that sets, that codifies setbacks is probably going to preempt any local code that seeks to forbid drilling on less than a certain acreage. I'm not saying that that will be the advice, but I, we will look at it. What I've seen so far is that the state setbacks, whether they're 350 feet or 500 feet or 150 feet, if someone can manage to satisfy the state setbacks, they may be permitted to drill, even if the parcel is, I think you heard earlier, might be as little as an acre and a half or two acres. And 150 feet, I think, is about the length of this room, just kind of guessing. So, it's not a tremendous amount of distance now.
No, having been on the drilling site, I can't even imagine that.
Right.
I mean, just the amount of equipment that they had there to get it done. So, again, if possible, I would just like to add that in there, because I think that would help alleviate fears in our community, and I don't think we want people piling on top of each other. And again, mineral right ownership, the majority of the mineral rights, I've been told, are owned by the city, so it'd be essentially our purview and what we do or do not want to do with our mineral rights.
We will get you an answer on that. I will certainly look into your suggestion. I think practically speaking, you're right, what I've seen is the same thing that you've seen, that practically speaking, these operations require about 10 acres to have a viable operation. But we'll research your questions and have specific advice for you back on that.
Will you get that back to us by email, so I can get a copy of that also?
Of course, it will come back to all of council, since all of councils give us directions.
I know, I'm just kidding. I'm just saying.
All the recommendations will come back.
We saw in the presentation that Aurora, I think it was Aurora, had a 1,000-foot setback. How can they justify 1,000 foot if the max state is 350?
I was pretty sure you were going to ask that question. I was thinking, I was prepared to offer that up, but now that you've asked the question. A lot of localities have tried to create further restriction or further guidance, and that's one example. Aurora has set a 1,000-foot setback with regard to certain types of uses. The short answer is, a lot of this depends on what certain operators are willing to litigate. litigate. And if there is someone who believes that there is sufficient resources or assets or revenue available, and the 1,000-foot setback is going to prevent them from accessing that, then they may decide it's worth litigating. If they can satisfy the 1,000-foot setback and they can move further back and still accomplish their objectives, they may choose not to litigate it. So, a lot of this will depend on what people are willing to litigate after municipalities made their decision on what they want to regulate.
And also, you mentioned having an inspector. During the budget process, council approved an additional code enforcement officer, and one thing the mayor mentioned is the potential of using that during the oil and gas process. So, while we cannot specifically state what the mayor will or will not do with those monies, it'd be nice to open up that conversation so there is possibly that next level of security for the citizens of Colorado Springs to know that somebody is there because with the 17 inspectors, I think that's what the number we were told for the entire state of Colorado. That only leaves so much of a level of comfort with those in the community.
I think if that's of interest to council, I think that would be a great topic for conversation between council and the mayor to talk about collaborating on that effort on a code enforcement officer, if that position's available, and if that was the best use, I think that's a great conversation with council and the mayor.
And then last but not least, I understand how we got here, but I don't quite know that I understand the process going forward because a lot of these are, there's options. So, are you going to present all of the options to planning commission, and they're going to narrow it down, or is staff going to narrow it down, or is the oil and gas committee? How do we get from here to the end?
What I would suggest is that staff and the city attorney's office together put together the draft regulations that match what are the recommendations on this presentation by the oil and gas committee with perhaps two or three options. So, setbacks, water quality testing, we would take the recommended option, draft a regulation to match that, and then have an additional alternative regulation on permits, on fees, those sort of things, have probably two or three options, and then bring that forward to planning commission. Planning commission can review that, and they can have a public hearing on that. That would be the first deliberative bodies look at those regulations, and my expectation would be that planning commission would make a decision on those, their choice or their recommendation to you as council, what they think would work the best. And then that would come to you in the form of a draft regulation, a draft ordinance, or actually be an amendment, probably to chapter seven, an amendment to the current city code along these lines with their recommendation to you. You would then be free to either take those recommendations or take other options, if they have something in front of you.
Will you give council the list of all the options that you give to planning commission so we know what they're looking over?
Absolutely. We'll give that to you and to the planning commission simultaneously.
Thank you.
Okay, Val, can you come back up here?
So, I'm trying to go back to Bernie's question with regard to public hearing today. I'm not sure I'm understanding why we're having a public hearing if we're really not deciding anything, and I don't want to be disrespectful to the people who came, but I also want to be very respectful that we have a full council at this point, and we're not going to, and that I think the next or one of the subsequent agenda items is pretty critical to us also. So, how do we do that? I mean, it seems to me, once we get these recommendations, that would be an appropriate time for the public comment part.
Boy, what a perfect segue you gave me.
Thank you.
Because it is an item on the agenda, and it is our policy to accept comment, I will, with a couple of limitations. Number one is, I have heard many people talk about the council's going to do this and the council's going to do that. I have no idea what the council's going to do. So, if you have some inside knowledge, please pass it on to me. Number two is, I've heard the council's headed in a certain direction. I have no idea what direction we're going to head in on this one. So, I would ask you, number one, Tim is exactly right. We do have another critical item to address after this item, and you've heard us say a couple of councilmembers have previous commitments that are fairly important to the community, which we'd like to get to. So, I'm going to limit comments to three minutes, and I'm going to ask you, before you step up to speak, to think, is it really worth talking now? I'm not going to tell you you can't, but remember, we don't have an ordinance in front of us. We don't have anything for you to comment on, and there will be plenty of times to comment. I think you're going to see a direction from this council that you will take it back to the planning commission. Matter of fact, I'm going to probably encourage you to take all items back to the planning commission. That'll be a public session, and it'll be two public sessions back before us when whatever ordinances are crafted. So, I would ask you, when you address the council, to please keep that in mind. Please keep in mind that we don't have a specific ordinance in front of us, our specific regulations. We're trying to explore where to go. So, if you have a couple of suggestions where to go, that would be fine, but do not presume that we're headed in a certain direction because we don't know where we're going. So, Merv?
Just procedurally, then, with what you said, would it be appropriate to put a motion into effect so that then the comments could be focused on that motion?
You know, I kind of, Merv, I kind of think that's a really good idea.
Well, before we do a motion, I'd like to have a comment then because...
Sure.
I think that, before any motions are made, there is a very vital piece that has been left out of this entire presentation, and one of the most vital pieces is that we have to remember in oil and gas that we are looking at the highest regulated industry in the state of Colorado, which is one of the highest regulated states. There are, almost every single issue that has been brought up has been answered by COGA or can be answered by the MOU process. And I'm a little concerned because when I was originally asked to do a moratorium for six months, which I approved, was because my understanding would be the city would be going, council would be going out and figuring out exactly what we needed to do to allow the industry to work because, as it's been said by, I think, 1,000 times, we cannot say no to drilling and gas in Colorado or any state in the United States. So, we saw how many areas were in the state. We saw how many the task force went through. There's just a few areas that are potential, and potential doesn't mean that they're actually going to be regulated. That means that's areas we're actually looking at, we have little concerns. And it's the exact areas that the county already went through this process, and they had the exact same concerns. They've already done the heavy lifting. They've already drafted their regulations. You go into the county website, you can see it exactly there. So, before we make a motion or move forward, I don't understand why the city is asking our city staff during a time when our resources are so stressed to go and do work again that has already been done and/or addressed at the state level or addressed through the MOU process. So, I would like to see us actually do what I believe we were doing when I was asked to do a moratorium for six months, instead of having September, come back with the planning, come back up to, excuse me, up to December, which is basically a year moratorium. I would like us to direct staff to move forward and saying, we're going to look at the county, we're going to direct staff to talk to the county, look at their regulations, see if there's any areas that don't match up. Because every single, if every single county and every single city in every single state of the United States all drafted their own regulations, it would be a nightmare. There's no way anyone could figure out exactly what they're going to be doing, and it wouldn't be fair to an industry. So, we need to actually look out at the county. They've done the heavy lifting. We need to move forward and bring those regulations through the, actually, the same areas because everything else is pretty much in the state. It pretty much says right or wrong what we can do. And even though we say we don't want to be in operational conflict, if we draft regulations that have that intent, we are in operational conflict. So, I really feel strongly that the county has done a, like I said, the heavy lifting. That needs to be our first piece. I would like to see us direct staff to say, look at the county, work with the county, and move from that direction.
Are you making a motion in that regard?
What about public comment?
Wait, wait, sir, we'll get there.
Apparently, you're bypassing it. You're bypassing the public?
Eric, we're going to get there a lot faster if you let us get through it here.
I'm not sure you're proposing to make a motion before hearing public comment.
Sir...
Which is clearly, clearly council does that on a fairly frequent basis, not uncommon.
In this occasion, do you think...
Eric, let us get through this place. Are you making a motion?
I would make a motion that this city council move forward to requesting that the staff look at the city, look at the county regulations that are currently adopted on their websites, work with them, have our MOU and LGD process work with them, instead of completely starting at one, have that, the heavy lifting, the main basis of what we'll be doing for oil and gas.
Is there a second to that motion? That motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another proposed motion out there?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. President, I move to approve the areas of potential regulation recommended by the oil and gas committee and direct city staff to draft regulations and present options for the city planning commission review and public hearing. Draft regulations and options will be brought back to city council for final approval, and I have two additions to that motion. One, that the city attorney investigate the 10-acre minimum for a drilling permit, and that we consider a code enforcement officer for the oil and gas operations.
Scott? Is there a second?
Can I ask a question at this point?
Sure, I'd like to find out first if there's...
I'll second.
Okay, now you can ask a question.
Okay, so I wanted to do is find out about amending his motion to include some of the language that Angela had to where they do what Val wants to do, but they also investigate and work with the county and see what they've done, so we don't have overlap.
And it's my understanding that's what the city staff will do, and that'll be part of the process.
Okay, as long as that's part of that process, I'm cool. That's what, okay.
Mr. Attorney, is that correct?
That is correct. We've actually, I've already met with the county staff. I met with them, I believe, in January, and we've talked with them since, so we will be in regular communication with them, and we'll certainly, if they have good ideas, we're obviously going to consider those very carefully, and we're going to talk with them about what they've done.
But we're still going to spend approximately another six months in trying to figure out to allow an industry to come forward.
Well, I would, just to that comment, I would suggest to council, we talked about this and our staff earlier today, we want to be respectful of council and respectful of the planning commission. There is possibility the planning commission could move a little more quickly. They could, we, obviously, we're delayed a little bit here, about 30 days because of the fire and some other things, but we want to get back on track as quickly as we can. We could, council could direct planning commission to please consider informational session in late July, please consider a special session in August to move this along with quickly so it got back to council in September. That's up to council, how quickly you want to ask planning commission to move.
Bernie?
If you are able to, can you address the issue of the annexation agreement? Because I understand that we're doing everything we can to move forward, but with that, what you can say about that, with that still being in place, there's really not a huge rush on our part, or if that's changed, an update would be appreciated.
I think, as you know, trying to separate the two, and I think we're trying to move as quickly as we can on the regulation. Whatever the city does with regard to the regulations, we've had communications with Ultra. Ultra knows that, just as when they had a state permit, they knew that that still did not obviate or eliminate the need for them to come to the locality, to the city of Colorado Springs, even when the city does have this process completed, which hopefully will be very quick, very soon. Ultra knows that under the current hard zoning and the current annexation agreement, there's going to be a lot of conversations and a lot of different parties they need to talk to before they could move forward. So, they're well aware of that, I believe. Now, there are other operators out there that own mineral rights within the city limits that are not subject to the annexation agreement. They have different parcels, so those folks might move more quickly once this current code amendment process is completed. So, I would just caution, be aware, this is not about Ultra and not about Benny Lewis only. It's about a lot of other parcels and a lot of other potential operators within the city limits.
Merv?
In the presentation, which I thought was very well done, the next step said that there was some direction in there that I'm wondering if we could modify the motion to include this. I think one of those said that the planning commission would hold a special public hearing and draft regulations in September and forward recommended code to city council for final consideration and adoption in October. That's what I remember those next steps saying. I was wondering if we could, would it be appropriate, Val, to add that to your motion?
Or sooner.
Yes, I will accept that amendment.
Second, you're okay with that? Bree, do you need anything?
I'm just doing some math while we were here. I don't know what the 350-foot setback is from, but if it's in all directions from the well, that would actually be a 700 by 700 square foot parcel, which actually is 11.24 acres. So, if we enforce a 350-foot setback from everything, that would be an 11-acre minimum.
I'm impressed with your math. I'll take your word for it.
I got a scientific calculator here on my iPad.
It actually would be a square, it'd be a circle, but we're not going to go there.
It could be a circle. I'll figure that one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I will accept public comment, please, with the caveats that I put out a few minutes ago. Come on up. Would you please identify yourself further?
I'm sorry. Lotus, and my address is 4265 Galley Apartment 303. What I'm trying to say is, I've done an incredible amount of work on this myself, and I've been going about it in a quite different direction, and it's incredible, the gulf there is between what you understand about this issue and what my research has come up with. Hente, for example, you mentioned, probably referring to me and my criticism of the council that it's headed in the wrong direction. And what I mean by that is, the whole direction of the committee, what you suggested that the committee be tasked to do, what the committee has presented today, what the attorney has presented today, part of the reason for the gulf is that the public has had so little opportunity to communicate with the people on the council and the committee. And so, my research, which wasn't limited by, oh, we want some regulations because as, where did Dugan go? Oh, man. I mean, she made a statement that's totally false. She said nowhere in the United States can anybody prevent oil and gas from digging its wells.
I think she said in Colorado.
No, that was nationwide. I guarantee you, and you can, you know, I'm looking for that kind of thing. And I have a list of nine communities, and I doubt you've done the research on this, which needs to be done. Nine communities that have created a rights, a community protection and rights ordinance that is completely barred drilling in all nine of those communities, including Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And this paper that's being passed around, the reason there's a paper clip is because there's two parts to it. This part is a copy, it's not the signed legal copy in Pittsburgh, but this is a copy of the ordinance that Pittsburgh has been operating under for two years. And, you know, to have done this kind of research and to, from my perspective, need to communicate, and I hope that you're able to find the time to read this because there's a lot in this that's not in the committee report, a lot of very serious and heartfelt research. This is not from the city of Pittsburgh. This is from an organization called the Committee for Environmental, the Committee, Community Environmental Legal Fund. I've talked to one of the attorneys there. This was from their website. They helped draft what was passed in Pittsburgh.
I'm going to ask you to wrap your comments up because your time is up.
What I mean by the difference in orientation is that, for example, when Val Snyder and others went to Greeley, they didn't find out because they weren't instructed to ask this kind of thing, they didn't find out that the NOAA, the National Atmospheric, and I forget what the acronym means, but they found... what the acronym means, but they found in Weld County, where Greeley is, that tons of carcinogenic benzene had been released, and twice the methane that was estimated.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to wrap your comments, and if I start letting everybody go, we're never going to get out of here tonight, so...
Okay, I hope that before, it would seem to me there would be a way to allow some more public input to this process before a bunch of work is done by the attorney, so that we can share our research with you and our perceptions. I don't think, based on the scientists, a growing number worldwide, there are countries that are banning fracking. Fracking now is not what it was 20, 30 years ago. And so there's input that you need and that you have not allowed, and three minutes doesn't do it justice.
Go for it.
I appreciate your comments, but you're making a presumption that we're not doing any other due diligence?
You're making a presumption that we're not doing any other due diligence, and that's not, just not the case. I've made several trips and investigated oil and gas on my own, council's done a great job investigating it, and so you're making a lot of presumptions, and I would caution you, because we go through the same conversation with regard to utilities, with regard to Memorial Hospital, with regard to compensation, and there's a lot of inputs coming at us. And so, you know, don't just say that the only, I think that the misconception is that you only see this transaction, but there's a lot of work going on in the background. And I would encourage all you guys who want to come up and say the same thing over and over, to be honest with you, that's kind of annoying, and no disrespect intended, but we get the message, and if you have information, which I, this is good stuff, get it to us, and we will read it, and we'll do that due diligence. So it's not that we're not trying to do the due diligence, and so that's a misperception, misunderstanding.
What are we going to do about the fact that this council and your attorney think that you can't stop this, if it turns out these scientists are right, and we should stop this?
I appreciate, we're not getting into debate right now, I'm going to, there's other people that want to talk. Chris, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to offer two comments, and I keep it very brief. One is that, to follow up on Councilmember Lee, the Oil and Gas Committee received a great deal of information from citizens either at the meetings or via email. We forwarded those to council, and a number of them addressed environmental concerns, benzene release, wastewater release, we're aware of the EPA studies, we're aware of what's been going on in Utah and Wyoming, we're aware of what's been going on in Pennsylvania. All these things are aware, are issues that the committee is aware of, and the council will be aware of, and the Planning Commission will be aware of. The second point I'd make, so keep the information coming, but don't assume that we're not aware of that, we are aware of it. The second point I'd make is that there is, as we talked about, a very clear difference between what the state regulates and what the city regulates. And a lot of the concerns, I think, that are raised really are concerns that might best go to the state, and might best go to Legislative Assembly of the state and talk to the state about changing state law. If state law prohibits a city from banning activity, then it is futile and a waste of taxpayer money, a waste of staff time, a waste of city council time to fight a state law.
I would like for you to talk to some attorneys that don't agree with you, including attorneys in Pittsburgh.
Sir, we're not going to, we're not going to have this argument, we're not going to have a debate right now.
And this isn't Pittsburgh, this is Colorado.
Right.
We follow Colorado state law, not Pennsylvania state law.
Yes, ma'am, come on up.
My name is Lorena Townsend, I'm a resident here in Colorado Springs, and I wanted to ask a question, actually, about the moratorium. I know that that was not extended, so what does that mean currently, since we don't have our own regulations in place right now? Can they still drill without that moratorium?
Chris, I think it's a good question, would you answer that, please?
There's a fairly simple answer, right? The moratorium has expired, so anyone that has property that is zoned agricultural, that would like to submit a permit and to engage in oil and gas activity, is free to do that today. The city would then need to process that permit and do a review. That, the time that would take to do that would probably run beyond the time that it would take for us to amend the code. So the short answer is that if someone wanted to do that today, they could, no one has done that. There is no one who owns property in the city limits, zoned agricultural, that has filed with the city for permission to drill for oil and gas, and by the time someone were to do that, I would speculate we would be done with this process.
Okay, but the probability still kind of worries me, so I don't know what it involves to do a moratorium, but I requested last time, I think, when I spoke before you guys, to put a moratorium on again, and I do have an online signature, I have 142 people, I'd like to imagine, have you imagine them standing behind me today, because they couldn't all be here. And this is completely social media, I haven't had time to go out and stand on a street corner, but I would bet that it would be a lot higher number. So, that's still something that I think we should do, because this is a very serious thing, I don't think it can be rushed. I know that some people would like to have it be done tomorrow, but this is my child's future, and it's very important to me that I know that this is safe before we do anything, and so far, I haven't been assured of that. I'd also like you guys to just keep in mind when you're getting information, I know you're getting a lot of it, some of it was coming from me, who's giving it to you and what their motivations are. I'm here on my lunch break right now, I don't get to eat today. I work almost full-time, just a few hours short of that, and I spend about 10 hours a week working on my petition, on my Facebook page, and getting research done about this. So I work pretty hard doing this, because I think it's important, not because I'm getting paid by solar companies or wind companies or environmental groups, I'm here before you as a concerned citizen of this awesome community, and I don't want what I've seen in other communities to happen here. For instance, Erie, where they have a drill right outside their school, is falling apart. The community is breaking apart because of this issue and because they did not do proper research prior to this, and didn't get the full public, you know, review process undertaken. So I would just really, really encourage you guys to continue to take public comment and to reach out to community and let them know that this is happening before somebody goes to their school and finds out they're drilling outside of it. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Do we not have a de facto moratorium, based on the fact that we don't, we'd have to go through the zoning process to change to agriculture for those who are not already agricultural?
Yes, I mean, to my knowledge today, there is zero chance that there will be any drilling activity in the city limits until we finish this process. If that were to change, I would immediately report back to you. I would also offer, we have a city attorney email address, that is the general email address for the city attorney's office, and anyone is free to send an email forward information to our office, and we will review that, all information that comes in.
Good afternoon, President Henty, President Pro Tem Martin, and city council members. I'm John Crandall. I did sit through 13 of the 14 Oil and Gas Committee meetings, I learned a lot, I have a perspective that's a little different from some of the committee members, and I like to voice that, and a few reservations. I'll start off at, right at the beginning, with the legal advice that was offered, and I don't mean from the city. We hired Howard Boygan and Hogan Lovles to give legal advice. Howard is very experienced, brought a tremendous amount of good information along with his staff. Hogan Lovles represents Exxon and British Petroleum. I understand that we paid Hogan Lovles a considerable amount of money for this service. My recommendation would have been to spend half that much money and spend the other half on an attorney who has experience representing citizens when they deal with oil and gas issues. I went to Greeley, the trip to Greeley, we had wonderful hosts, and we learned a lot. As you can see kind of where I'm heading, where I'm heading is, even though we learned a lot, it was a good experience, I think there was a lack of balance in many areas that needed to be considered. Greeley, interesting fact, I will read a letter in a moment from Josh Joswick from La Plata County, and that, the two laws that took place in 1992 are very interesting because they had such different results. There are a couple of other thoughts that I have. One, I want to mention the Dick Andrewall and his role in this operation. I personally think we are really lucky to have that individual. I would encourage you to consider codifying many of the rules and suggestions that he has already come up with. We might not have him for the next 20 years, and it will be a loss. And it would be nice, I think, to have some more formal regulations that are based on the homework that he's already done, it's been a remarkable effort, I think. I have to mention one comment, John Maynard mentioned about Michael Martin and his ice cream factory, and should oil and gas be regulated any differently from the ice cream factory? And Michael and I went back and forth on this a little bit, and my comment was, yes, it should be, and I say that because the basic health risk of an ice cream valley factory has to do with overconsumption of what it produces. The health risk from oil and gas drilling might have to do with something being downwind or downstream from what takes place. I gave you a little packet of information in my letter, which summarizes some of my comments. There are a couple of things in there that seem totally irrelevant. One is a little picture of the Schlechlach spill that took place 20 years ago. It's just a little picture of, a diagram of how it affected the aquifer. I hear the buzzer, I will now go to Josh's letter, it will be brief. "To the city councillors of Colorado Springs. The following comments come from 12 years of experience in writing, adopting, and enforcing county oil and gas regulations as a La Plata County Commissioner. In that time, La Plata County was sued by the Colorado Oil and Gas Association and by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission over these regulations. La Plata County prevailed in court, proving that it is legal for local governments to have extensive regulations. In the Bowen Edwards versus La Plata County in 1992, the Colorado Supreme Court established that local governments can exercise their land use authority in regulating oil and gas development. The 20 years since that ruling in La Plata County, while under county regulations, has thrived. Mineral right owners have gotten rich, the industry have thrived, local taxing entities have gotten significant revenues, and the residents have received a level of protection they would not have gotten from the COGCC. There's been no downside to local regulation. What this shows is that local government cannot be successfully challenged when it enacts regulations, despite the threatening rhetoric you hear from the state and the industry." There's another half to this, and I know I'm out of time, but I want to point out a couple of things. I also went through all of the county hearings, and we talk about two things. In fact, I wish that in meeting number one, we had reviewed what the county had accomplished. They did a lot of homework, it was very worthwhile, would have been a good base to start from. The second thing is, the baseline water regulation that you are possibly suggesting is very close to what the county suggested and was slapped on by the Attorney General. Just a personal comment on the whole subject of operational conflict.
John, I'm going to wrap it up.
Okay. My comment is, I don't think you're going to be creating it, I think the lack of regulation from COGCC is a major source. Thank you.
My name is Eric Verlo. I wanted to voice my disappointment at being, at the public being limited to three minutes. I don't think that was a fair thing to do in a hearing like this, and that certainly limited us to inviting the people that wanted to come up from Werferno County, and wanted to come from the Western Slope, wanted to come from Denver, and when they're told that their comments would be limited to three minutes, it seems hardly worth their drive here. So that really limited us in being able to have the allies that we could have had here in addressing you. Also, you know, to hear, to hear sort of a premonition that, you know, you don't want to hear the public whining, or you don't want to hear the public get up here and repeat, repeat itself over and over, you know, I mean, it's not the public's fault if they have several of the same opinions and they want to express them, that's really disheartening, I think, to hear. It sounds like you're giving advice, but, you know, the public really has a right to be putting input in here, and especially in this, in the way this project has been developing, there hasn't been a public input period in which, in which people have been able to say, look, please look at the harms of fracking. I mean, I thought it probably was a wrong thing to prejudge the council and say the council's going in the wrong direction, but when I listened to the presentation today, it seemed completely true. It seemed like everybody's talking about setbacks, like they're worried about what they see in the window, or they don't want to be too close to something that's going to fall down, and not really, not really talking about the fact that we're, we're talking about polluting water, we're talking polluting our source of water, and not just our groundwater, but the water for future generations, and we're talking about just polluting it. And, and so, none of that was brought up, and when the theme today of what regulation seems to be, you know what, state says you can't do anything about it. The purpose that, why we brought the city of Pittsburgh's ordinance to you was because that has, that has to do with a local community saying, we want to protect our community, we're going to protect it against this dangerous extracting, extraction industry. And that does, that means that if the, if the, if the government, the city, the, sorry, the state government wants to shove it down your throat, wants to influence your attorneys, I mean, prevail upon your attorney to say, well, you know, there's nothing you can do about it, you can't protect it, you just got to take it. No, that, you're in the position where you can actually consider an ordinance that says, no, we're going to protect our people, we're going to protect our communities and our natural community, which is nature, animals, and the environment. You're in the position to do that. Who else is? Who else can do it? And I guess, two things that struck me today, when we're talking about property, we're saying somebody can drill on, on property that's zoned agricultural. Hello? Agricultural? Since when has mining been an agricultural thing? I mean, are we okay with that? And then, and the last thing, we're using Greeley, I can't believe, I've lived in Colorado for 20 years, but even I know that Greeley is not one of the places that we cite for tourists to go visit. We, I mean, not to be, not to be impolite, but we all know what it's like to be in Greeley, and we avoid it, because you have to plug your nose. So I can't believe we want to use Greeley as an example of where we want to go. All right, thank you.
Mr. Verlo, I don't know if you stepped out of the room during the entire part of the presentation, but there was a part of the presentation that addressed concerns with, and I'm looking at the exact slide, it's titled groundwater and surface water qualities, and say that we're not considering that, I think, is a misnomer.
Aquifers, we're talking about...
Groundwater and surface water, that covers aquifers, too. Groundwater, aquifers are groundwater. Surface water is water on the surface, groundwater is water in the ground.
You've been told legally you can't do anything...
Okay, next speaker, is there any person that would like to address this? Yes, ma'am.
President Henty, President Pro Tem Martin, members of the council. My name is Mary Talbot, and I'm here to urge you to expand those proposed areas of regulation. As was mentioned briefly, in this, by the speaker before me, the Colorado Springs Vacation and Tourism Information website talks about the fact that, as you all know, Colorado Springs is home to the U.S. Olympic Committee, the U.S. Olympic Training Center, and over 40 national governing bodies and sports organizations. Tax revenue from tourism accounts for 1 in 4, 25% of all of your city revenue. Over 5.5 million visitors travel to the Pikes Peak region annually, spending almost $1 billion here in our community. Tourism is our third-largest employer. While it's important to expand our economic base, we must not negatively impact our tourist industry, and that includes the quality of our air, our water, and our scenic views, the aesthetic value of the community. So the real challenge is, how do we protect this billion-dollar goose that's laying lots of golden eggs while enabling responsible oil and gas drilling? The way to do it, of course, is good local regulation. The state and the industry will try to convince you that the current state regulations certainly adequately protect the community. With such limited time, let me give you one example where they do not. CDPH regulation number 7, air quality, paragraph 17 subsection C1, allows each pad to emit up to 20 tons of volatile organic compounds annually before emission controls are required. Think about that, 50 pads times 19, let's say 19 tons for the sake of discussion, is air pollution of 1.9 million pounds a year. If you don't know... If you don't know that, I would ask you to review those air quality regulations, as well as all 175 pages of COA regulations. Now, how are you protected? You're protected because, again, and I will congratulate Dick Anderwald and his people, because the Form 2A approved says that you have to have air emission controls on everything here. I don't see on that slide a recommendation that says these must be included on every well permit. And that's a gross oversight, because that's also how you're getting your water quality testing. These conditions of approval must be standard or codified in your regulations, or you don't have that protection. You have to negotiate with each operator. Before my time is up, let me then recommend several additions. One, standardize the COAs. Commit to installing an air quality monitoring program using your county health department so you know what the quality of your air is. Conduct water quality testing based on, not samples of convenience, but water quality maps. And add local inspections. Regulate waste disposal. Prohibit storage pits. Require comprehensive planning so that you see how all this fits together. Essentially, I ask you to look at the whole. I was among four of us who submitted a brief 20-page matrix to you with areas of regulation on May 15th, so if you don't have it, I can resend it. It's probably in your email. But you have the opportunity to grow an industry and preserve a community, but you're going to have to do more than minimum regulation. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Judith Lee. I'm a scientist. So I've heard talks before about people not looking at this scientifically, and I want to assure you that I have papers published in my name, and I have a doctorate, et cetera, et cetera. The thing I want to put forward is, one, Mr. Lee, I appreciate what you said, that let's not assume that you don't know many of those things. The problem is that someone mentioned about not having the public hearing and not having enough input. So we really don't know what you know. We know what we've given you, and sometimes it's, who knows if it's garbage, or who knows if it's really factual. So I think that that's a problem, and it would be great to have a meeting in which we know that you know what we think is important.
Can we just respond? I didn't say we shouldn't have public hearing, public input.
I just suggest.
It might be a better form than today. That's, you know, I'm not.
No, I agree. What I mean is, we're saying some of the things over and again, just because we don't know that you already know them. And there would be, it seems like there might be a way for us to find that out. And I also would like to put forward, and I'm sorry about your concern, Mr. Hentie, about that you haven't made up your minds already, which is great. Part of the problem, I think, is that in the format of the Oil and Gas Committee, is that of the 13 or 14 meetings, I looked at all of the minutes, I've gone to some of them. The people who are pro-oil and gas development, COGA, COGCC, other attorneys, a couple of PACs, four to one, they were represented over people who gave the con side. So there's one thing. The inclusion of Howard Boygan on there, who just had a thing in the Denver Post saying how other people are demonizing oil and gas, he's definitely pro-gas. It would have been nice to have neutral. So that's another thing that says that that's how you're pointed. And another thing that was really disturbing is on the last meeting that was canceled, that's postponed because of the fires, there was a plan that was submitted for the 2013 Priorities and Strategies that was put forward for the council. One of the first topics was enhance the safety of our citizens. One of the topics was grow economic prosperity. And under that was, under grow economic prosperity was plan for oil and gas development. So it's like pouting your chickens before the eggs are hatched. So that's already has, the council already has in their plans, that we're going to plan for getting money from that. So that's, I think, why we have that idea that perhaps you're not going to actually listen to the citizens who overwhelmingly say, we want you to protect us first. They Ultra spent $20 million on that site because that's a drop in the bucket for them, knowing full well that's already zoned residential. They might just have to walk away from it. But they're just betting that hopefully they can get leaders to roll over and open it up to them. And I'm hoping you actually protect us, because there are other great ways to make money for this. So that's what I have about the vision, is I want us to have the vision as, let's protect the citizens, let's follow Commerce City, who, I know my time's up, but I wanted to say one thing what they said that I didn't bring with me. So there, you don't get to see it. But Commerce City's, their council people are saying, we can't control what they're putting into the ground that we can control so many other things, and we want to be a model for the rest of the state, for all of Colorado. And this is their council people, overwhelmingly, that's their approach, is we want to protect our citizens, we'll do everything we can. So that's what I would like you guys to do, as much as possible. Look at that first, and then also evaluate really the costs and the benefits. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, President Hentie, President Pro Tem Martin, and the rest of the council here. I'm Kirby Hughes. I represent the Conservation Committee for the Sierra Club for the State of Colorado. I have been evaluating oil and gas exploration, development, and production in the state for eight years. I have a background in physics, math, and engineering, but I'm not a professional in the oil and gas industry. The Sierra Club would never advocate placing a polluting industry in a metropolitan area for environmental reasons or for the health of the general public. That's obvious. I came to basically present our thoughts, our thoughts, on the oil and gas committee's areas for potential regulation. And as has been previously pointed out by Mary Talbot, thank you, Mary, we have a specific need for a reasonable monitoring, review, and management capability of our air in Colorado Springs, because we recognize that probably we're going to be getting this industry within city limits. Therefore, item number five, Val, ground and surface water quality, we've got to include air quality. It's very, very important, because we're talking production in consecutive years, in decades. We need baseline tests for air quality, and I recommend that our baseline tests be done in duplicate so that we can augment trending in successive years. Item number four, setbacks. We need larger setbacks established for production air emission equipment. Condensate tanks are highly polluting. We've got to remove them specifically away from population and wildlife centers. My recommendations for setbacks for production air polluting equipment would be 1,000 to 1,500 feet, but that's only that subset of equipment. Considerations should also take into account wind directions and landforms that could redirect wind, either to or away from population centers. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is that a question for Chris? It's my understanding that there's things like the state air quality and the federal air quality standards, it is automatic that any oil and gas operator has to conform to those, correct?
Correct. Just one quick comment. The state permits, at our request, city request, we put together a request for the state permit to enhance air quality testing, and they did comply, which was nice to see. Localities that have attempted to, in Colorado, that have attempted to regulate air quality have run into some very significant problems, because the state views that as their preemptive area of regulation. That the state and the federal EPA, and that's why you see EPA testing in Utah, Wyoming, and Montana, the state and the federal agencies all regulate the air quality.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Brad Johnson. I'm employed by Ultra Petroleum Corporation, located in Inglewood, Colorado. And I'm the Vice President of Reservoir Engineering and Development. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Obviously, we've been following very closely the process of the task force. Tremendous amount of information and perspectives have been shared, and I just want to commend the effort today in summarizing that succinctly and accurately, in my opinion. Ultra continues to support the well-documented position of the COGCC, the State Attorney's Office, and others regarding the state's well-established and very specific role in oil and gas regulation. Ultra also supports the local government designate process. You've heard a little bit about that today, the LGD. It's used to address specific local issues. I think the key that was mentioned earlier, that it provides flexibility, and it can go both ways. Since our initial permitting efforts last fall, and during our drilling operations earlier this year, Ultra has participated in the state regulatory process and also in the local government designate process. We work closely with state regulators, LGDs at the city and county level, and all the agencies that regulate oil and gas activities in the state of Colorado. We believe this process is working well, just like it is in many other locations in the state of Colorado. I would encourage this council to leverage the resources of the state and the county efforts that was described earlier as heavy lifting regarding the regulations they put in place, and that the council focused on the specific local issues here in Colorado Springs. Ultra remains committed and will continue to work with the city to address these specific local issues. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am available for questions.
Thanks, sir. Does anybody else would like to speak to this side? Come on in, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. My name is Jim Loggard. I'm a conservation sheriff for the local Pikes Peak Sierra Club group. I also make my living reading and analyzing cases for the legal profession, and I've got more than 30 years' experience in doing that. I heard Mr. Melcher's presentation, and I would certainly recommend that you listen to him over much of what you've heard from state officials, from the COGCC and the Attorney General's office. I think he's given you the good information on what the law really says. I do want to draw your attention to one particular statute, which is section 346127 of the Colorado Revised Statutes, which is on reasonable accommodation. Paragraph 3B of that says that makes compliance with land use plan a defense to a claim that the operator has not reasonably accommodated a surface owner, that is, the owner of the land on which the drilling is taking place. Paragraph 4C states, and I quote, "That nothing in this section shall establish, alter, impair, or negate the authority of local and county governments to regulate land-related oil and gas operations." There's two points that I want to make on this. The first and most important one is that the city's land use powers are unimpaired by the Oil and Gas Conservation Act. A state agency cannot oust a city from its lawful land use authority simply by creating a truncated and rudimentary local designate process, which really does not begin to address these land use issues. And the second thing, of course, is that the way an operator conducts oil and gas operations can be determined by a land use plan. I mean, I think this addresses Ms. Dugan's concerns, that the, you know, about the conflict between state and local regulation. The key is harmonization here. The state has its role, the city has its role. The city's role is to look at all of the land use activities taking place in an area and decide where it is appropriate to allow oil and gas operations to occur. With directional drilling, with drilling of multiple wells from the same pad, it is no longer necessary to take, you know, a strict checkerboard type of approach to drilling for oil and gas. You can accommodate all of these other activities taking place, or which will take place, and I certainly hope that you will take the committee's recommendation to adopt very comprehensive regulations which look at all of these land use issues. Thank you.
I'm Ellen Johnson-Fey, resident of Old Colorado City. And first, I do want to express my appreciation to all of you council members for your diligence, to the Oil and Gas Committee for their efforts. I have followed this process very closely. I have deep compassion for all of you, given the amount of information you're trying to process, and that you are indeed trying to make the best possible decision for the well-being of this city. I want to express a deep concern about the possibility of elevating the rights of a corporation, which our nation seems to do, do, over the rights of humans and citizens, and to urge you not to follow that dangerous path. What I want to recommend to you, when you go home this evening, and I hope you do get to go home at a reasonable hour, to take a deep breath, and, you know, stand in front of a mirror, if you will, and go deep inside yourself and ask yourself, what is the legacy that you, as a council member, want to leave for future generations? Dollars are not, you know, the New York Times had a whole section on how dollars don't create happiness for people. And the well-being of our community, you are charged with the well-being of our community. And to just bear that in mind and use that as you continually weigh the evidence that is brought before you. I'm very much encouraged by the research that's been done by the committee and by people who are not on the committee, to bring all this information before you. There was one other question that I wanted to ask, because it got raised at the town hall meeting, and to my knowledge, the answer still hasn't been given. And that is, a really deep cost-benefit analysis of having an oil and gas industry in Colorado Springs. Is this really a long-term benefit to our community? And why would we want, and I urge you, please don't downsize zoning to make it easier for the company, to drill as if this is a wonderful thing for our community? It wasn't the vision of the people who founded the community. It doesn't seem to be the vision most of the people who have moved here. And I would urge you not to let the pressures of an industry change the vision of America the beautiful city. And may it remain so. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Hentie and council members. I second everything Ellen just said.
Thank you, sir. Your name?
And my name is Scott Olson. Thank you. We have a beautiful city, we have a beautiful front yard, the Pikes Peak area, and we also have a beautiful backyard, Banning Lewis Ranch, to the east. My question is, where is Colorado Springs going to expand, and how do you want to expand? My suggestion is, we do have the ability to say, you do not want to change the annexation to agricultural from residential, and look at the potential positive future we could have for that area. This city is bursting with ideas. This city is bursting with ideas, people who want to, are doing solar, sustainability. That could be a whole community based on that. So I would urge you to really think about what we could do as a potential for that land to maybe perhaps bring more Olympians in, Olympic training athletes to use it, have solar, more solar areas, agricultural gardens. There's much more potential, I think, than just allowing oil rigs and drilling rigs, because once that starts, the ball starts rolling there, it's not going to be available land to develop or take care of for many, many years. Thank you.
But unfortunately, we don't own the land anywhere.
That's true. Perhaps we could find a developer that might want to develop...
I think the last developer went bankrupt.
Yeah, but there are, there are other developers that maybe want to have the resources to do that. You don't own it, but you do have the right to keep it annexed as residential, you know? Or talk to Ultra, maybe they could see, make a lot more money developing it as a green community. It just, I don't see the benefit, you know? I don't see the benefit, there's no benefit to Colorado Springs citizens and community by having that land fracked. Thanks.
Thank you.[1411.92][1411.92](APPLAUSE).
Walter Lawson. As one who went through all the meetings and did a lot of other work on the subject, I would ask, well, would it be too much to ask, that we keep the city as a protected place for human beings? Oil and gas brings the threat of toxic fumes and all the other things you've heard about today. But cities has always been a place where people seek and find protection. We, in fact, do protect natural areas, roadless areas, wilderness areas, and so on. We don't bring equal protection to the city, to human life. And what we're doing is adding to the kinds of liabilities we already have, floodplains, wildfires, expansive soils, landslides. We're adding earthquakes, toxic air, toxic water, water shortages. Why would we want to do that? Even our sustainability plan does not cover this issue. The oil and gas fumes and emissions that, and this is very new, very recent, shale deposits around the country are heavily in Pennsylvania and surrounding states, in the Marcellus Shale, North Dakota, Texas, and Oklahoma. Colorado and Wyoming have only a bit, but the point is, there are billions of acres, we're not saying don't do it anywhere, there are billions of acres. There's a million acres in the county, so why does it have to be done in a city? If you must do it, there are 7,000-plus acres available, already ag-zoned. Let's do it there, limit it to that. We have no local rules, you're not ready for that. What if there occurred hundreds or thousands of wells with all their impacts? We're just not ready. So we may be in for a crude awakening, because this process has not been responsive to citizens. Counties, we're not the only place, counties and cities elsewhere, realize the state oversight isn't enough to protect quality of life. 20 inspectors do not cover 47,000 wells, plus new ones, in our city. Enforcement is 90% of protection. Are we going to rely on 20 people to protect us from an organization like the COGCC, which is dedicated to production? It is a production uber alles organization, it's not greatly concerned. It has a few lip service phrasing in the law, but if you read that law, you know where the emphasis lies. Hidden costs were brought out by the NPA City at UCCS. Oil and gas exploits, extracts, and exports, especially not only the products, but the profits. There is no 25% a gallon of gas, as there is in other countries where this is done, low local benefits. So I request specifically that we provide reasonable, the council provides, reasonable oil and gas rules by MOU and IGA, working with the state, to limit drilling to the 7,000 acres we're committed to, because of that terrible Supreme Court conclusion that makes the industry dominant over cities and their citizens' rights. To setbacks from drill sites which are 300 to 800 yards, this is more realistic in terms of air emissions and peoples who have suffered these circumstances, not an arbitrary thing that advantages people who want to run a drill rig. To collect adequate contingency funds from the industry for roads and everything else, and not just the bare minimum. In short, to protect human life and health, air and water, by limiting the risks, since those risks aren't enforced on us by the state. That's reprehensible, it ought to be counterattacked. You ought to be going back out of this process from these people with new rules, new laws to the state, starting with these, but you've heard many more, and that ought to become what is the law of the state of Colorado, because it's not good enough, and all these other counties and cities are telling us that. Thank you.[1741.41][1741.41](APPLAUSE).
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any additional comment from the council? Seeing none, I'd ask you to vote, please. That item passes on a six-to-one vote with Councilmember Williams and Slako excused, and Mr. Melcher, I believe you have your marching orders now. I'd like to take a short break before we get to the last item. Short, please.
Short, yeah. Thank you. I've got a baby waiting for me at the parade.